I lost the computer.
I feel they have it.
Yes, and I've come to the very few like.
Yeah, that's what has launched it. Just see how things are.
I mean, I'm going.
Those are our three. Everyone will be there. Appreciate more than courts are there to. Okay. Although I think I'm here next Tuesday. I'll send you a.
Okay. All right. Let's make a motion to follow the gauge order. For a second. All favor. I stand to pledge the pledge. Is there anyone here in the audience who'd like to speak about any application or any matter other than the application before us? If I hear no one attending, public comments is worthless. That's all my fault. Okay. We have the reason perfect. Application before us, but before we. I would like to make a motion to go into is that the session for the purpose of discussion pending litigation. And. Legal counsel and likely right man acting asked me to come in with us. And hopefully you can do this quickly. All right. Do you want me to go through? The application a bit before you do that? Um. I mean, that's fine. I don't.
If it's necessary.
Yeah, I don't know. There's yes, I'm not. I don't know. But. It must. I mean, give us just a few minutes. It's not. It's not an opportunity. Have other other pending litigation. We need a second. Oh, do I have a second?
If you're going for more than one to discuss the mention of both. Names of pending litigation that you're going in to discuss.
So what does that mean? One is one is the the. We're. In point.
Okay, so you're going into executive session to discuss one matter pertaining to pending litigation. On all experience speed signing more than.
More than that, or if it's contractual. It's like. Okay. All over. Are these saying? No. Did he? The judge.
Well. Yes.
So I like the whole. And when we come back in, you have it first here either Janet.
Okay, we're sticking with Rob.
Okay.
So I miss the final.
I said. All right. So. The guy says.
You make a motion to come out of executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Make a motion to. Please sign the sign. As the name of joint the the meeting, I make a motion to that Raleigh be a vote member tonight. So I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor. Aye. Okay, Jim, I'm gonna. Ask you to vote. If that's okay. I I would like to make a motion to retain as capital. Jump summer. Extended. All those in favor. Aye. I'd like to make a motion to retain that Jan Kowski or Matt Janowski as counsel.
As needed.
As yeah, they're both only.
Okay.
But. All those in favor. Aye. Matt, you're welcome to stay back there or to come up here whenever you. We're winging first. Those are all together. You gotta bring my beans. I don't know. My get a video. Because everyone, everybody is red. And and reviewed all of the documents that Maggie has forwarded to us. Yes. They they include. The information from. In Satan. The correspondence of August first. They include the. Letter from New York State Historic Preservation. Office. Right?
Yes.
Okay, and to comments from the Hurley Historic Preservation Committee. They also include information that was submitted by Matt Jackowski in regards to historic standards and reviews for several. Sample.
Specifically.
Right, I'm gonna say jump.
Say what those are. Any material from the Preservation League of New York State regarding. Solar panel installation guidelines for historic buildings, the National Alliance of Preservation Commission's sample guidelines for solar systems and historic districts. And the Secretary of the Interior's standard of rehabilitation and illustrated guidelines on sustainability for rehabilitating historic buildings. That's awesome.
Onward, we receive several comments from the general public and trying to.
And the comments that were submitted at the previous EPA. Hearing.
I'd like to. I'd like to put forth. Resolution number one. Of the last before the discussion. Do I have a second?
It'd be nice if we knew the.
Yeah.
Number one, okay, number one is going to have everything should be.
Uh, and with the natural screening.
Okay, I never wanted to know their full resolve. It's just.
The one with. The one that's had number seven.
This is the thing. Yeah. So. Matt, I'm gonna ask you if you don't mind because. We're not got on that.
Want me to.
Take a water.
And then. Yeah, can be further discussion.
Yes.
So. This is preparation by the board, whereas the CEO received the building permit for the post panel since 2024. So it's fortunate that this is Main Street to the town of Hurley Historic Preservation Commission as required under section 109A. And whereas the planning board received an application short form, EAF goes map and appropriate fees for the certificate of appropriateness. On September 4th of 2024, whereas the application was placed on the September 26th, 2024, then to begin a new business. Whereas at that meeting, the board reviewed the determination of the historic commission as well as the photos submitted by the historic commission. The Chair of the Commission, Frank Dunn, was also present at the meeting in the HPC in an email dated March 27th of the 24th, stated the following. It is unanimous consensus of the HPC five members that we would not like to see the panels that are proposed to the back east group. That will be seen from Main Street. We are in agreement that any panels that cannot be seen from the street are okay as per the five members of the HPC. And whereas the planning board denied this certificate of appropriateness and determination dated October 24, 3024. Copy, which will be in the next determination. And whereas we have the appeal to denial to the town of Hurley, the board of appeals for hardship. The appeal was denied. The hardship appeal was denied by the town Hurley zoning board of appeals on April 10th, 2025. And whereas the planning board has agreed to reconsider the applicant's case based on new potential mitigation presented by the applicant. And whereas the applicant submitted new material on July 14th, 2025. Matter was placed on the July 23rd planning board agenda. And whereas the board reviewed the current submissions as well as the previous file on determination. And whereas the board held special meeting on Thursday, July 3rd, 2025, at which time the applicant spoke to the planning board expressing intentions that. That ground mounted solar was inadequate alternative for this site. And here's where I'm also going to recommend in addition to that, whereas and. The whereas the zoning enforcement officer. Has advised the board that ground mounted solar is prohibited in their historic district. And whereas the board held a special meeting. Whereas the board requested additional comments from the HPC resources, whereas the application was classified as unlisted under speaker. And was referred to the New York State Office of. What is a. Parks.
State Office of Preservation Guard.
Parks, Historic Recreation.
Parks, Historic Recreation.
Preservation.
Correct.
Matt, do you want to agree?
NYSOPHRP. Whereas the board received a response from that department on September 2nd, 2025, in which standard guidance on solar panel installation was provided. The guidance was as follows. Solar panels are acceptable on historic buildings only after other locations have been investigated, determined, and useful. On non-visible flattlers or roofs that are not visible from the primary elevation and may be acceptable on minimally visible roofs. If the roof is not a character defining feature. Installation of solar panels should be done in a manner that is reversible and should not damage the historic material.
You mean, you mean for it?
Or. I think. And whereas the board has reviewed the following materials, providing additional guidance for the installation of solar panels in historic districts. Including the Preservation League of New York State Small Scale Solar Panel Installation Guidelines for Historic Buildings. The National Alliance of Preservation Commission's sample guidelines for solar systems in historic districts. And the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation and illustrative guidelines for sustainability for rehabilitating. Whereas at this special meeting held on September 3rd, 2025. The board reviewed part two of the short EAF and did part three, which completely. Wanna, yeah, has everyone had a chance to review that? Whereas. The board received responses from each member of the Town of Hurley Historic Commission on August 29th, 2025. All concluded that the commission's recommendation under section 109A remains the same as the specific four recommendation. Putting solar panels on the side of the roof at 37 main, which is visible from Main Street should be done. And whereas the board received all the letters from the public which were submitted during the CBA hardship public hearing. Which total 33 letters, the letters were a mix of support and opposition. And whereas the board held a special meeting. And. On September 30th, 2025, at which the proposed exterior alterations for review pursuant to the criteria are approval of a certificate of appropriateness listed in the Town of Hurley code 109-8. And whereas the board considered the principle under 109-81, that historic properties shall be maintained through their exterior historic features altered as little as possible. In considering this, the board found that the placement of solar panels upon sections of the roof where modern asphalt shingles have already replaced the historic wood shaped shingles. Will not alter the exterior historic features of the structure. And whereas the board has considered the principle under 109-82, that the alteration shall be compatible with its historic character. And with the historic character of the surrounding properties. In making a determination on compatibility, the board has made the following findings. Modifications to the general design and additional conditions are necessary for the proposed alteration to be in character with the historic property and district. That the proposed alteration consisting of the installation of solar panels on portions of the roof is not large scale in relation to the size of the built up roof. Property itself, the surrounding properties for the neighbors. And that although there are other similar properties of the same type and age with modern features and modern shingles on their roofs. There's currently no similar landmark properties in the historic district with solar panels on them. Given the novelty of this newer technology in the historic district, great care must be given to the texture, materials, form, passing, size, rhythm, spacing, structural elements, proportion, illumination, and color. So that those alterations do not stand out and compatibility with the historic character of the structure and historic districts is maintained. And that the building at 37 Main Street, the Demont House, is one of the prominent stone houses. In the historic district and has a great historic significance to the town of Hurley. The exterior changes must not alter or damage any of the historic features to this structure. And the solar panels must be placed in a location that accomplishes the intended purpose while minimizing the visibility from the public right of view. Now, therefore, be resolved by the planning board of the town of Hurley. Based on the application, all relevant materials submitted in this matter, a motion was made.
So so my recommendation is let's go through the conditions and discuss those and then we can.
Pick up.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So could you want to be?
Okay, so number one, all solar panels shall be flat, parallel to. Jim, we'll give you a. Flat, parallel to, inconsistent with the existing slope level of numbers they are installed and shall not visibly alter the slope. Two, all mechanical systems for the solar panels which are not.
You go to three.
Yes. Flat.
You have to.
No. She said two.
You might be. Two is silver.
Yeah, look at it.
So I'm sorry, my bad.
It's okay. All mechanical systems for the solar panels which are not fixed to the roof shall be located towards the rear of the building and shall not be visible from the public right of way. All solar panel three, all solar panels, mounting systems, mechanical systems, and connections shall be installed in a manner that does not cause damage to the stone structure. For the historic features of materials which shall be removable and reversible. Four, that the solar panels, mounting systems, mechanical systems, and connections shall be of a compatible, shall be compatible in color to the roof material. And there shall be no elimination on the roof so that it shall be inconspicuous as possible. Five, the arrangement of the panel shall be done to minimize visual impact, shall be installed with a minimum spacing necessary between panels. Six, the panels and mounting system shall be installed and placed in such a manner to cover the full surface of the roof from peak to ridge and. For gutter. For imported gutter and fascia so as to minimize visual impact. And seven, the natural screening must be planted and maintained along the frontage of the property consisting of at minimum 25 trees for the purpose of minimizing the visual impact. The solar panels located on the rear. The screening shall run approximately 75 plus or minus feet in length and shall consist of trees that will be at least five to six feet in height, the height of the plant. And shall grow to a height of 13 to 20 feet, with each tree being planted at a distance of three plus or minus feet apart. The tree shall be allowed to grow to their maximum height and shall not be created in a manner that would lead the world to the height of 13 to 20 feet. The tree shall not be removed and the property owner shall promptly replace any trees or other portions of the screen that do not comply with the. So now for discussion purposes. Let's let's go through. One to seven. And see if anyone has any comments, modifications, discussions. All solar panels shall be flat panels of the roof. Does anyone have any? Issues or concerns with that condition?
No.
Okay. Two, all mechanical systems which are not fixed shall be located near the building. Any? An issue with that?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
All solar panels and connections installed in a manner that does not cause damage. And shall be removable and reversible. Anybody have any issue with that? Four, solar panels and mounting systems and mechanical systems shall be in a compatible color. I don't know that the mechanicals are there at the rear, but.
And no illumination.
And no elimination. As.
Wasn't there also some discussion about making sure that that panels have minimal?
Non.
It's a window.
And that's for. Uh, yeah, it does minimize to make the panels as inconspicuous as possible, so. Right, I guess you could do that on.
My my other concern with, or my other comment would be that if the mechanical systems, anything that's installed to the rear of the building. I don't think we are concerned about whether or not it's compatible or.
I would argue that that shall are anything are the solar panels mounting.
Mounting mechanical.
You want to change it so anything that would be visual from the public right of.
Yes.
And.
That would be visual from the public right of way, should be. What number is that one?
The number four.
So if you want to see more. I don't know if the side building that's facing the street.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that that mechanical systems are are not.
To be in the rear. That's why I'm saying if it's in the rear, it doesn't.
And this is just saying that other. Anything that is visual from. Which. We're not including the mechanical systems that are not to be visible at all. You want to reset that, so it's just all solar panels, mounting systems, and connections. That are visible, take the mechanical systems out, so that's.
All there's. The arrangement of the panel shall be done to minimize visual impact and shall be installed with a minimum spacing necessary between the panels. Any issue there? The panels and mounting system shall be installed and placed in such a manner to cover the full surface of the roof face and from the peak slash ridge. Back to the gutter or fascia so as to minimize the visual impact.
Did you put? You know, the gutter. No, not the gutter. You know, the angle was set for.
Station.
No, you know how the roof comes like this and then it spans. Danger fist. Because it hits the other roof.
Oh, that.
No, what's that called? The valley, yeah. The heavy ball way to the valley, right?
You follow, I mean.
What was that? Rally is probably not visible from the street.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
This moment.
But the entire roof would become. Yeah, on that section.
Seven, so do we want to? I'm looking at valley and I just. Well, you say full surface on the rest of this.
Okay, I don't care. No. I know that has to be.
But also now you're talking a being at an angle to the square, so. Feel real better.
Well, the square, the square, I just didn't really look there and then it's the panels like for the whole group. That's the look that they were showing us. In other words, I hope the whole all of her. Recommend it.
Yeah. We want to change the wording. Just always as close to the whole group as practical.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and if it's not functional.
Well, they don't want people to minimize visual impact and break up where, you know, you know, panel and like big space with gray, you know. Things that is uniform, covered by some minimized visual. With gray going around.
I would, I would say more possible because we don't know what the constraints.
Everybody, I think that they said possible.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah.
Purpose of this is to minimize visual impact, so you don't have fear that it's based on here.
So. Number seven, natural screening. I know that, so. I don't think.
Why did it need to be a minimum 25? Yeah, because that's how excessive.
Is that so? Isn't it the holders?
Right, right. That was the only thing that jumped out at me because they already have trees planted there. That's nowhere near.
We may not. We may not.
Yeah, right.
There may not be any need to improve number seven based on. The fact that they have already.
No, because it's maintaining it also.
Oh, yeah, that they need to maintain. Well, I would say, I would say maintain the plant, the trees are planted.
Yeah, the photos would, the photos that I said would be very helpful at this point.
So.
That's what I was.
Actually, yeah, that tree that I said, there are 25 right now.
Really?
Oh, are there 25?
I know.
Oh, okay.
I really want to.
I didn't think that we needed a number, but. Okay.
See, you see, if you look, look at that. That when you call the valley, it's just not going to be seen, right?
Correct.
Okay, so and and secondly, having solar panels myself, they kind of come. They come, they're they're big, so so if you. If you play Tetris or anything like that, you know, you're going to have gaps in that 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 valley part, so it's going to be tiled that way, so you can have.
Actually, we put wherever possible. I don't think they're going to have a triangle panel to go with.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, they can't build it. We won't get it, but also number seven, I don't like the idea of making the fact that it's not visible from the street. A prerequisite for future applications. They put the trees in, very good, but that just changes to be maintenance, maintaining the trees that they put in.
That would give some flexibility, right? So, you know, what if some of them die from whatever.
So natural, so natural screening must be maintained along the frontage of the property, period.
A governable period. I would put down the trees that they planted to, you know, I would, if this was the resolution, so it would be, the trees, natural, well, it recently entered or whatever you want to call it, something.
Existing natural screening.
Yeah, because the whole, basically the whole idea of hiding the, the pimple is what I would not say in future applications.
So, so, so existing natural screening must be maintained along the frontage of the property.
And now we go to.
And then go down the trees. Cross over there, put down the trees so they're allowed to grow and then that's from height.
So. Is it necessary to put that in there?
Yeah.
The other one, with the those doing the water?
Uh, water and water? That's a good one. However, upon sale of the house.
Well, it is a condition for the, for the solar panels, um, if it's in here, so the new owner should be made aware that that's part of, so that they can appropriate this, allowing for those panels on that side.
How do you enforce that? Do you restrict them to keeping your trees around?
Well, if they cut them down, a new owner, it basically has to notify that they have to remove the panels and import replant.
Yeah, you can put that in about in future ownership. Has to be made aware of.
Well, just the property owner, and that covers it.
Yeah.
Just the property owner.
Yeah, I don't.
Aren't, and aren't all of these things always?
Yeah, I think the tree shall not be removed and property owner shall promptly replace these trees or portions that do not comply with these.
Right, right, yeah.
That requires the tree owner.
Yeah, right. It's almost like a right of way.
So existing, and I'm just looking at the room, so existing screening must be maintained along the frontage of the property, where cutting out all the stuff pertaining to the specifics.
Until they get out.
The trees shall not be removed and the property owner shall promptly replace any trees or other portions of the screen that does not comply with these.
Are, are we saying the tree shall be allowed to grow to their maximum height?
I think that, I would recommend that, but.
Right, no, that's where I thought we were, we, no, I thought we were starting, the tree shall be allowed to grow. I, I, I know that, there's, there's the question and that's where we're talking. The, if there's a, there's a visual issue of, of planting trees along the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I. I know those trees, they're going to get to thirty feet high. And that means they're going to get to the height of the whole house. And so the public, the public will not see this house. We're basically, we're masking the whole house for that, and that to me is sacrilegious. It's not sacrilegious. It's, I'm not a religious person, but it is, it, it's, it's somewhat problematic. I think it's kind of like the, the, the attempt to mask it.
Do you want to maintain their hedge height?
Roof that we're showing, can I say something about that? Roof that we're showing, uh, is probably twenty-five to feet. That, that we're going to put the solar panels on.
Yeah, yeah, the, the.
It's just a little lower than the main roof in front. I'm just saying that those trees that dominate that house, it will, the house would become the small, those stand sandwiched kind of thing, so. And that's why, why I was getting at, that I, if, if, if we're going to, if we're committing this here, you know, will in short order over time on a main street end up with, with a hedge running, will become the entrance type of thing. You know, the edges, everything we get in, that's just a question and, uh, and a concern.
I think they could ask them to remove them, but I don't think they can do that.
No, I'm not, I, I, I'm not.
Well, here we're, here we're requiring that if one of them dies, that he releases.
And not let them grow higher than shows the physical of the.
So, so, I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think you can restrict the height of the, of the tree. You know. So you can.
One by one.
Swear they had a harvest.
I know, I, I think it's an ulteriorist, uh, condition to place upon this.
Don't want, or the.
To try to increase to a certain height.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like, it's kind of like, it's a done, it's kind of like, it's kind of like, it's frustrating because I would never, whoever the arborist to suggest that, the other, the other part, I mean, this solar that brings this, do you number seven out? The trees survive, they survive, if they don't, they're, they're.
Either go, they're there now and they're going to grow.
I'm into that. Will you leave number seven?
And then do whatever they want to do with this.
Trees have a, I think. Yeah, the other condition is really taking care of it to a large extent. The green, the trees are like gravy.
Or, or as like, or as saying, they don't like the trees.
That's what I was talking about.
Was that?
You can't make a. Oh, I, I, I'm not suggesting that. What I'm saying is take seven out and let nature take, sort of the tree. They die, they die, they grow, they die, you know, you know, I.
And you guys aren't setting any pressing requirements.
Right.
That, that, that's, that's.
That's probably, uh, it's just an idea. Just don't have any.
In retrospect, I would, as, as, as soon as really in the garden, so I would have said, uh, just a couple sprinkled there and just be done with it.
Right.
The edge will go out here.
No, I don't.
It creates a very different flavor. I think this, I think we take seven out and it doesn't, because you put this in there or, you know, it opens the door down the road for something else. We got more kinds of.
Before we go on to resolution, I'll go back.
Well, you definitely need to go back to see very closely that, discuss that, if you just. Also discuss the correlation, uh, as to criteria that you're discussing and why these conditions are in place, so that.
Not where you would.
So do you take seven out?
I just took ten.
Okay.
Okay, so. Now, now that, not that.
So.
I'm going to give you thirty seconds if you don't mind. Not that we need to take trouble comment, but if there's something here that you think, um, from your experience with the discussions with the solar installing or Paul, that we have misrepresented as, as feasible.
That I've covered the ground so far, I'm actually in agreement with Ray about the long-term maintenance of the trees.
Yeah, no, that, that, we, we, we jumped to that. We're done.
Okay.
So I'm asking whether there's something.
I think that, that that resolution gives enough, enough flexibility that, uh, you know, that just, you know, we can live with that.
Could, could, well, could you clarify what it is? I already said that removing seven and not having anything about the care and maintenance of the trees, removing them.
Long term.
Okay. You're, you're.
All right, so then.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
So then I would like to run through.
Can I shortly, just one second?
Okay.
So, um, I, I think we can all agree also that, and James, I think you would know this, on one oh nine point seven of the, of the code, in historic district, no landscaping should have been done without, is it just going to?
No, no, that's a major landscaping.
That's not considered major, all those trees?
You're certainly, well, feel like.
Okay.
I don't, and I put it in writing to the board two months ago that I did not see it as.
Okay, okay. All right, I mean, I read it and it seems like.
We're, we're all learning and we're moving and.
I guarantee, if you want to be on my determination, it's not personal.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, so, short form, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the, with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? I would suggest that it is no or small impact. I don't think that this is a a moderate to large impact because we are not altering a star.
A triple small.
Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the roof years ago there? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
Wait, in this one?
Sorry.
In this important one, yeah.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? On this.
Yeah, that, that's a big one to miss.
That is.
I would also, for me to put a moderate in there.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, they've left us with just, so that that could be more in clear cut, so that is, yeah.
I'd say, wow.
Okay. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse changes in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from mass transit by the sidewalkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy if fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or will it pull energy out of the? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private waste water? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
Moderate.
Okay, three.
I mean, I'm still on this small.
I think these are all small impact, but.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the natural resources?
Miss.
Good, number nine. Will the proposed, so number nine, old water bodies, which is no. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion or any damage? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Yeah. Okay, so we have two areas that the board deals are honored in, one, the proposed character or quality of the existing community, and two, the character or quality of, for the historic archaeological or aesthetic resources. There, I, I believe that the measures that we take within our resolution will help to address those and. So every question that was answered was moderate to large impact, there is a need to explain the security level of the proposed action and whether it will result in significant adverse environmental impacts, please complete part three. So town of Holy Planning Board has assessed the request by the applicant T B Reeves and E F A, but I'll do it. Oh. To be allowed to place solar panels on the east and west side of the back portions of the roof of their residence, located thirty seven Main Street town, early, in the town of Holy Historic District. The action requires a certificate of appropriateness from the planning board in order to refer to the request to the U S A Office of Parks and Recreation for the farm. As the structure involved within the historic district, which is a state and nationally designated district, the structure itself is designated as a national landmark. The request is to allow solar panels to be placed on the western rear side of the structure, the west side of the structure, to visible to the main street, and the board feels that this visual impact when created affects the main street visitors. Response from ship of states to follow. Solar panels are acceptable on the historic building only after other locations have been investigated and determined to be usable or non-visible, flat roofs, roofs that are not visible from the primary elevation and may be acceptable on minimally visible, on minimally visible roofs if the roof is not a character defining feature. Installation of solar panels should be done in a manner that is reversible and should not damage the historic. And then the board reviewed the comments and has taken, and has taken itself appropriate action. For the day. And mitigate.
That's all, that's all it has. I've got the potential.
Potential. Environmental. Impacts. Okay. With that, I would say that the board offer a resolution to this as a day death. And what, second? I, I offer a resolution to adopt this, the amendment declaration.
That it does not have a significant, uh, adverse.
There's quite a section.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
So we're trying, and I appreciate it.
Okay, now, now I believe that we can go back to offering the resolution as amended. Therefore, we at resolve, the planning board of town of Holy, that based on the application, all relevant materials submitted in this matter are motioned to remain by I'd like to. And seconded by. All right, one second. Will please the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of solar panels on the rear, eastern, western base of the structure that are depicted in the application and following modifications and additions of the external alterations are compatible with historic characters under property and external historic features are maintained. So, as amended, roll off.
That's to approve the one that
Yeah.
That that granted.
Yep.
And then we discussed.
And, and we.
Right, we made a couple of changes.
I. Which is lots. Ray?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Dennis?
Um, aye, I got it, I got it.
Chris?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion afterwards.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Members of the Board. Save me a little bit. No more litigation. Thank you very much. I'm happy, I'm pleased and perfect, you know, it's been a long road. Board certainly get a few difficulties and, uh, like, do we need to agree that it's helping me to go with the with boards to go ahead with the projects and and say, right, nice.
You want to, do you want to copy over? So, can we take a second? Uh.
It's not the final.
No, no, yeah.
It's going to be.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Anything's on the record.
Right.
Okay, so, um, we have two very quick reservations, one to authorize the release of the remaining escrow for, um, builder? As there is no outstanding.
We make that motion.
All of the paper. Okay, and, and Chaff, Chaff, Rick. Please the escrow for Chaff, Rick.
All the world send it.
Yeah, there's no.
So they left their garbage.
Right, so. Ray made. You forgot. And, um, Tracy comes back, there's just a couple of my. Oh, and Matt.
Very good. Oh, we were, you were.
Right, I'm sorry.
The regular meeting.
But does it have this? I have.
From this, we should, is it honorable to ask the historic preservation committee to tighten the rules?
Well, that's why I said I'm going to send the latter one and get on it.
Yeah, it's.
What's the procedure? What is the protocol?
Well, they can tighten the rules, but then the center board has got to adapt. Yeah, because their rules are enforceable, as recommended, right?
So how do we start from recommendation? How do we, how do we get, get that ball rolling? So then. So, so, so the question is, we, we.
Change it. So that and I talked about doing some training with all of the boards.
Well, no, we don't, we don't need, I know what you're saying. I'm going to send a letter, see if I.
We need, we need power set.
Yeah.
We uncover the small structure. So that this doesn't keep on happening and, and it's going to happen.
Once it's lived.
Well, you know, it's quite a while back to decide.
Yes, if our committee, if the, if the historic admissions doesn't have authority to, to.
They don't have the force.
They don't have the force, they can write up, make recommendations to the zoning board to say this needs to be put into the code. Yes, and the zoning board has to write it up and then send the proposal, just like we sent the visual assessment. Yeah, to the town board to look at and adopt or to, to preclude this from. We'll never be able to plug every potential, but we can at least, we know these are gonna come.
More, well, we're starting, we're a lot of stuff. Say that because the zoning has.
We, we really should make deal with some committees and we have a lot of exceptions that's a code. I know you did the one with the, for the visual assessment, but this section, all the sections that respond to what's. I think we should have meetings, just the board has so much information to share. Yes. I think this is great.
Well, so, so, but again, I'm, I'm asking about procedure now and, and protocol. I, I'm trying to learn, not just, not just, I, I want to understand what is, so we've identified there needs to be tightening, what is the protocol, it has to go through zoning to put it into enforcement capability or, or what?
Well, so that's different, so, I mean, as opposed to working with them and providing some guidelines in terms of how they work to do a project and what the expectation of what we need them to return to us, so you're, you're right, I mean, that needs to be done. What I've asked, I mean, just in terms of talking about the board, our board, what I've asked is that the agenda for the next meeting should have a summary of the application, right? So we should be looking at, when we get an agenda, then it should be going out, oh, more than we can admit. But we should have an agenda that tells us what the app is requesting and what, and then we should have what sections of law pertain to our review of that application so that when we come to the meeting, we all will have the ability to look at what it is that we're using, what's the criteria and the guidelines and the structure that we're using when we're making, when we're doing, so similar to, you know, I mean, hopefully we're not gonna have to go through.
But I think, I think that's different.
No, but Raleigh's saying we can ask them to do what we need.
I, I, I think, I think you're, you're, you're kind of digressing a little bit, I'm, I'm just asking straightforward questions. How, what is, what, what needs happens to put some code down?
First, if we want to deal with the.
Well, that's why.
What was that? I said, we want, look, we want to deal with the historic district. Somehow one or two of us or somebody's getting on the board, has to meet with a historic commission and say, you know, here's what we could see happening more in the district, or here's what we think we, we need to tighten up the guidelines.
But that's not gonna come from the historic commission.
They can't, they give us feedback.
But that's why I'm saying, yes, I agree with what Ray is saying, but it also goes back to the comment that Matt was making in, in our conversation, there needs to be a structure for them and, and an education about the structure of, of how to provide the information and how to review the information so that they can.
Lose that. Isn't this all just complicated, because basically if another historic home comes before us and needs ones with solar panels, we still have to review this criteria of appropriateness, correct? How do we change the criteria?
Oh, is that what you're asking? No, no.
Well, that's the simplest thing.
Do that in the application of the law.
Right, how do we do that?
No, but I'm, I'm gonna answer your question. I'm gonna ask it a different way, do we have the authority to request from the landlord's commission to give us better responses to the questions and.
And you guys probably should, uh, send something to them that, that if this is addressed to this criteria, we ask that.
But how do you tighten up?
And for the purpose of law, you should send, these guys are the legislators.
Bye, Mike.
Uh, the town board, so you guys should send a request and say, you know, now about dealing with this, we believe that, um, the town should take a look at this law. And as I said, I have New York State model.
Right, that's what Matt was saying.
And potentially.
How do we follow up? Who's gonna follow up on that?
Well, Matt, Matt and I theoretically and Debbie was.
Well, if you guys want to vote now, say that we want as a board, a letter drafted to the town board, basically recommending that the town board take a look at.
No.
Changing this.
So.
Do one of us wanna like draft something or give to them? By meaning the attorneys would think differently than, you know.
We've got it until the end of the year on the US. No, we don't have. We'll put it on a.
I'll, I'll, I'll draft a letter. Now I'm gonna answer Dennis's, I'm gonna call him Dennis's, we have to meet as a, you know, off, not in meetings to discuss the sections of the code that we think zoning code law should be changed based upon our experience and then get into the Matt and Tracy show to put it into the overview.
But I, I would like to get some feedback from the members of the historic commission for what they, their.
Sure.
Their overview is. I don't want to leave it out.
No, 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 but do they?
Well, I, my, my feeling is, I don't know, the historic commission is like, there's no power.
Right.
So, so it's not like pointless. And I didn't do any of that. It really isn't good to judge vote and it's.
We missed something, we missed something.
Mom says they're there because they care about some change.
You can give them.
That's the thing, they're, they can't do like.
That's no matter.
Hundred years.
Matt just said we can request that there.
You guys can request one of the changes, like, like, basically send a letter to the town board that we believe that, uh, changes should be made to the town's historic preservation law and can add most of those changes. Well, I mean, you can request that the historic preservation committee, um, be empowered and should be made these determinations.
It'll never go through.
Cause they.
We can ask it, and I mean, it'll hear.
Right, they don't have to take your recommendation, but if that's what your recommendation is.
They don't want. Well, well, I, I, I would, we're, we're jumping from A to Z, uh, I, that's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that the, that the board be asked to look at this and clo, and assign to who has the authority to make the, plug those holes, all right? So this doesn't occur.
I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying.
And if you want to go and talk and get the input from Brendan and, and historic, that's fine, but they don't have any authority and, and. We're never going to assign them.
Raleigh, Raleigh, the only person who has the authority to make those changes is the town board.
We don't.
So we have the, we have the ability to make recommendations, we have the ability to review what the town board.
So changing of the zil, zoning is done by the board, but doesn't, but the request to change it, doesn't it get drafted by the ZVA?
No.
Who does it get drafted?
No, I'm saying that's our committee, we buy these books.
The historic society may not have power.
You guys can send a lot more recommendations before, before the town board votes on any change.
There is a society.
Raleigh, we didn't reach individual assessment. Did you see that? Were you here when Mitch did the visual assessment changes?
Yeah, he was, he was.
So that, but then went to the town board after you guys. Are we only committed to get together once a month to sit around and discuss the different issues of what we want to recommend?
He did that before.
No, no. You should have noticed. It's a work job. It's a work job. Because I need to know.
You don't want to come?
Or are you gonna do a light agenda, that's a light agenda and discuss.
I just said I would like to speak with a couple people. Okay. So that, so the, the, the idea is to write a, write a letter to the town board asking for changes to tighten regulations on historic properties and districts to address innovations such as.
So let me go, not just send a letter.
We have to give them.
We have, we, like what? This certificate of appropriateness? We were writing in new points or change the ones and then you send those, say, this is the change.
So, so, so no le, a letter, a vague, a vague letter on request is pointless, you're taking it to be something actionable.
Wait, here's what, to get the ball started, you can send a letter saying, you know, we believe based on, you know, the test couple, certain appropriateness that, uh, the town board should seriously consider making certain changes to, you know, address the new technologies and other things coming through and make it. They, then you guys can meet and have other things while they're considering any recommended changes. No, 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 your request, just so that's on the town board's radar, that this needs to be changed. And then you guys aren't the only ones who are looking at potential changes. They will be, as I said, I have certain New York State model codes and whether they adopt the entire, the entirety of it or a portion of it, I think it, you know, is one of those things that the town board should potentially consider, but the feedback is gonna be like, like any changes the town board says, okay, we're considering getting these changes, say, oh, are going to be sent back to you guys for review, it resets to the HPC, sends to the ZBI just to get additional feedback and you guys can say, hey, we don't think this or we think that this should be added or this additional criteria should specifically address, you know, solar guidelines or specifically address, you know, these type of.
So that, that seems to be outlining, let's be a little vague and send it to the boards that we can see if there's an appetite by the board to, for us to even go down this rabbit hole because we could spend a lot of time with each other and the board, we never tell them what we're doing and they'll say, we're having.
Raleigh, Raleigh, we're, we're all sort of going and spiraling, the bottom line is that the town board has asked us to provide them with some updates and, and revisions to the code. Paul has been working on it, we looked at some things, so the reality is they want it, so, but, but Matt is saying is like, it's a good thing, let's start with so that they know that we, the planning board are working on it and then we will have some.
And then they have to work on it.
And we have to work on it. And that's how we get it done.
So it's, it's, it's a step process, that's the process.
That's the process.
Okay, that's what I want.
You guys have to trust that. Who's gonna write the letter, Maggie?
I'll do it.
Try to verify.
And, and just follow up with me.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Um, one thing came up today, so Ryder and Moe, I guess there was a site visit scheduled this morning. I guess Carl, you were the only one that ended up. Okay, so somebody did go and I know Ryder emailed me and said, is Carl gonna start, so he did catch you. So Janet, you were questioning whether it happened or, so does, somebody did get up there.
We were there, Carl and we were there forty minutes and we decided to leave.
And.
We, we know what we need. It's gonna happen. Well, that's not the point.
No, that's the first thing in the code, that's the first thing in the code is if it's in our, it's just, it's gonna be on the agenda.
Yeah, I have. Okay, so we need to get out.
Oh, no, no, Maggie. I think, if you've already shared this, could you share again the contact information, phone numbers for everybody on the board, to each board, to the board members? Cause I didn't have the phone numbers.
I don't have them here.
I didn't have the address. I thought.
Can you provide it?
Is that a problem?
Yeah, yeah.
Were you just, you're just listening.
I, I, yeah. Yes.
We're gonna hang after you, but.
But I, I. Six fifty.
Okay, this is very.
You got it, but it won't copy it.
I get that, you don't have to show me. The money mail, what email? My existing email? You know, like, did Anderson Claire, oh, it's D O C, I didn't know that, okay?
Having the preservation committee.
This is the email that I need to put in.
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't have that information. And then he gets that and he put it in again, it says, and then at some point it says your temporary password.
Right.
Okay, that's a, that's a reset, isn't it?
I thought it was, I thought it was in there.
So that we don't, so that we don't have this kind of.
Okay, I'll put this in, that's, that's the temporary password and then I'm gonna, right, so you, so I put this in on Google Gmail.
Right, so if you go to.
So why would it be a duo, that'll probably take me to do it.
Right, you go to www.gmail.com.
Okay. I have the very basic information.
Okay.
I'll get it set up.
Hi, Maggie.
Hi. This is my real job, like, this is what I.
What meeting is happening?
This is the CAC.
Okay, like a partner. So me and Debbie are the back over there talking politely, is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, because we have, we have like five minutes up, so I'll just.
No, I don't blame you. This is, this is something you have to do by law, I'll leave.
Yeah, well, law doesn't seem to work for the planning board.